Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call and roll?
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Happy New Year, council. I was just realizing that as the calendar turned to 2019, that makes our city 180 years old since its founding. And we, you know, have a profound responsibility for the continuity of good government here in our city. And it's our pleasure to start another year. And then this year, we got some, we got some great news. I think Michael, I got his email that he got it posted on Facebook. But a travel website called Only in Your State put together a list of, that said, "Never underestimate these nine Iowa towns with unique things to do." And Fairfield was number one.
Yes.
And it was interesting that Villages Van Buren was number nine. So we've definitely got this corner of the state, this area of the state cornered in that category. So we'll move then to our consent agenda. And I'll ask if there are any additions to this evening's agenda. Not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the December 17th council meeting, approval of the December 21st special payroll of $24.28, and a December 28th payroll of $112,626.73. Approval of the January 11th, 2019 payroll, $122,676.86. Acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes, approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $1,900. Approval of our November finance report, a resolution for employment in the water department of Casey Kronk, a part-time meter reader at $17 an hour. We have approval of liquor licenses for University Amoco, Flamingo Lanes, The Depot Brewery, Dollar General Store Number 7142, and Play. And finally, approval of claims in the amount of $369,568.99. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
Motion to approve?
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call and roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes, but I'm staying from the minutes for the December 17th meeting.
Okay. Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next council will move to our public forum and appearances. And first, we have Steve Beeman with Car Collectors Unlimited. And we're looking forward to a little summer weather for our car show.
Well, as you can tell by my shirt, I don't mind this.
Yeah, we don't mind either.
You can always put more on, you can only take so much off. There's laws against that.
Right. We just want to be thinking about the nicer weather, that's all.
This is the nice weather.
Yeah.
I'm here to ask for permission to use this square. September 22nd, I believe. I'm on map, I'm not on calendar.
That's Sunday, Steve, as you generally do?
It could be Sunday, yes.
Okay.
I believe, because we're off this year because of the way the calendar falls. So we're the fourth Sunday versus the third one because Kewaunawas Day is the third Saturday.
Correct.
We would like to use the square as we always had, from Burlington to Briggs, from Court to Briggs, on Broadway, from the alley to B.
Okay.
And that should have all the sides of the square. We'll be using the parking lane on the south side of the square also. We've got our unique drive around for the trophy presentation.
So, yeah, you're, on Broadway, you go from West Alley to East Alley that intersects between Main and Second and Court and B. So you're using half of those?
On Broadway, we go all the way to B. We go at the alley.
You go all the way, okay.
We go at the alley to the west.
Right. All the way to B.
Yeah.
Got it? And then you're using everything beyond Court and Main between Burlington and Briggs?
Correct.
Okay.
The same schedule as?
Same schedule as has been. And this, this works well on Sunday because businesses aren't open. So there aren't any complaints in that regard. So it generally works out pretty, pretty well. And Steve and his group puts on a really great car show.
It works out good for us all around because Kewaunawas Kids' Day is the day before, so all the barricades and everything are already laid out for us. There's no extra work for anyone.
Very good. So then I entertain a motion to approve the request for the use of the square on September 22nd.
Move approval.
Moved by Flornoy? Is there a second? I'm sorry, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Next council, Dave Lewis would like to address you regarding a property issue.
I just want to say that...
Dave, can you give us background on the, on the property?
Yeah. There was a fire, big house, main and grimes. We eventually tore it down. And I proposed to the PL's Board that to put three townhouses on there. Is that correct, PL's Board?
I'm actually, you mean the Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment, excuse me.
Right.
Okay. I have all my facts totally right. I just have a comment here, and I'm not trying to rehash the past. Basically, what happened is they approved it in November of '17 for me to put three townhouses on there. January of '18, I had heart valve surgery. So I was kind of out of it for a few months. I started working on this. There's four parts to making this thing work. One is you got to get some bids. Well, has anybody here ever tried to get a concrete bid in this town? It'll take you months if you can get the guy on the phone. And then getting something in writing is like impossible. So I spent the better part of the summer when I was here in July or August trying to put together bids to see if I could get this thing to work financially. You know, you got, I had Stratford Homes was going to build the building, bring it in on a truck, drop it in. You got to do the concrete foundation, you got to get electrical, you got to get plumbing, finish the roof because they don't make these things too high on the trucks. It's a lot of work, you know, getting all your bids together, even to get to the point where you can make this thing work financially. So that's what I was working on in the summer. And I pretty much had it ready to go. And then financially, I thought. But then, the long and the short of it is, I was in a hospital twice last month. I got COPD. I don't have the strength to push this thing through, okay? So I'm abandoning it. I'm just going to let it go and use the house that's there. And I wanted to say one thing, and the main thing is, I think we all agree that it's a principle of the city that they want to get more housing downtown. And that's what I was trying to do. And I'm not going to go over the past, but I will say that I didn't get any support. And in fact, I got a lot of pressure to fill in that hole that is very similar to a swimming pool. Many swimming pools are around town. They're not asking, asking these people to fill in their swimming pools. Got a lot of pressure to fill in that hole, which would have added to my cost. And, you know, I'm not going to go any further with that. What I'd suggest to the city is that they designate somebody or think about designating somebody to support people that want to build downtown. And tell them what's available. Tax incentives. I see Don Halting's on the, on the thing here. He's going to get some, some tax incentives. I know that Marty Brett's probably into, well into six figures in tax incentives. If I could have got something or even talked to somebody about that, did talk to the economic development people, that was non-existent. So, you know, I just encourage the city to think about how they could support people that want to accomplish building downtown.
Okay. So, so I appreciate that, you know, you have been able to fulfill what you'd hoped to fulfill personally with working in the downtown. But I think we could, we just have a basic issue of, of, you know, public safety that, that hole that was left by the foundation after Burne has been there for three years, a little less?
No, it's not three years.
How long is it?
It's, it's since the...
What was the date of the fire?
Well, the...
So it's construction, so over, let's just say, over two years?
One of the dates that's important here is when it was approved to put some townhouses on there. And I asked them, "How long do I have to do this?"
Right.
They said, "A year and a half." So I think that's a real date.
Well, year and a half for the construction cycle.
Right. And that hasn't finished yet.
Yeah. Let me, let me ask our zoning ordinance officer and chief, fire chief Scott Vaughn to just give us an update from your perspective. Scott?
Pretty much what he said.
Dave, let him have the noise from, please.
So the fire was in November of 2016?
He said 17.
No, it was 16. The fire was in November of '16.
Board of Adjustment was November of '17, right?
The Board of Adjustment was November of '17 when he was granted the variance to put the townhouses up after not seeing anything. He did call me over at one point. He had a lady there that was, I thought he said, from Wausau Homes or maybe, what was it, Stratford Homes? And that was going to take place, and it didn't. And it's just got to the point, we've let this go longer than we let most go. If a house is demolished because of a fire, the foundation has to be filled in. He did have plans, and we tried to let him act on those plans and work on those plans. But we've just seen no, no progress to this point.
So at this point in time, we've, we've asked Mr. Lewis to have the hole filled in by today. And how many times have we set dates for this to, to occur?
This is probably the second or third.
Okay.
Is it filled in yet?
No.
So, no, I think you've made your presentation. I want to ask the council has any, any comments or any questions on this issue? I mean, it, you know, it, to me, you know, our concern should be, first and foremost, public safety in a situation like that. It's just, this is an area that's across from a public park. You know, there are people in there probably before 10 and after 10 times when it is dark.
Right.
And it just invites someone to walk across the street and to, you know, onto that piece of property. You know, it, it just, it concerns me on that, you know, on that basis. And I would think you would feel the same way from a liability standpoint that you would just want to get that taken care of. It should be simple enough to do. I don't know whether you've ever gotten a price to have it filled in. But it's, and, you know, I'm, the building, have you received insurance money for the property that you lost? Have you taken that already? Or is that, or is the insurance company going to supply that when the? Well, I just, I want to get clear, first of all, you know, from the council, what you would like to see done in this situation? Because again, our, our code enforcement officer has asked for this to be taken care of several times. And do you want to back that up?
I guess my initial opinion is, is that unless there's an imminent sale, and if David has, has somebody that says, "Fine, I'm going to buy it from him" and would promise to go ahead, we need to go ahead and enforce, enforce the code. I mean, that's why we have it.
Well, and I think that's what you're saying. That's why we gave the leniency the first couple of times.
I mean, I would have loved to have seen townhouses up there.
Well, I know.
You still would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, unless there's somebody standing in the wings that says, "Hey, I'll do this right now." We've been more than lenient on it.
Our city attorney want to make a comment, John?
Yeah, I do. The way this is supposed to work, you have insurance on it, right, dude? All right. The insurance companies in the state have a responsibility when they know there's something that probably should be demolished. They're supposed to hold back from you 10%. Have they held it back? Did we release the demolition?
Yeah, once the demolition is done.
All right, okay. So we had the money there for demolition at one time. You've got it.
And at this point, well, you didn't get it, okay? Bob Brown got it. All right. The point is that that's supposed to work that way. So if this situation comes up, there's still something left for demolition. We've been there before on some other sites. If you don't have the 10% that was allocated for that, and the town fills it in, we're just, we're stuck with that insurance statute because we've allowed you the benefit of a doubt under that statute. But that puts us all the more in a position where we should assess this if it's the city that ends up fixing it.
Dave, did you contract with Brown to do the demolition?
And, and filling it in.
And why hasn't he, and why hasn't he done that?
Because it's snow. I told him, we talked about this on Friday. I called one call. We're all ready to go, and then it's snow.
So you have a contractor that basically is still under contract to fill it in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Currently.
Currently, so.
Contemporary. So it'll happen in the next couple of days.
It could happen.
As soon as Bob Brown can get in there and see what he's doing, he'll do it.
Have you checked, have you talked with Bob Brown?
Yeah.
And what's the story there?
I, what I got from Bob is that he doesn't really want to do any more work for him.
But was he paid to?
I don't, I don't have any idea on that.
Do you have a contract, Dave, with, with a written contract that states that he is to fill that in?
Yes.
Let's, let's leave it there for now.
I can, I can try again tomorrow.
Yeah, please, please do. It sounds like if, if that's all in place, Dave, you have to do everything to, you know, to push that forward. Is there a date that the council would want to set from this point, regardless of whether it's Bob Brown filling it in or someone else?
I would say the first meeting in February. That would allow for some snow, some sleet, and hopefully some good weather in between.
Okay. So that would be, I think that's, the 11th? So February 11th? So, see if we can get, okay. So then, Katie, would you make that a motion then to?
Yeah, I make a motion to extend the date to have it filled to February, what was it?
11th.
11th.
Okay.
A second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we'll have our Beautification Commission annual report. Paula Armstrong co-chairs for this evening. Oh, Paula?
So Beautification Commission, I see our role in three main areas. One is to keep beautifying the downtown area. And the second is to beautify the entrances to Fairfield, make sure they're looking good. And the third is to inspire businesses and homeowners to keep their properties beautiful or improve their properties. So in terms of the first one, to beautify the downtown, generally, the few things that we've done are to organize volunteers for our Street Sweepers Ball, which we instituted again after a few years. We hadn't had it. And to organize volunteers to maintain the nodes, the garden nodes, all around downtown area. And that, I think, was a big success. Well, both those things were a big success. The Street Sweepers Ball, we had over 30 people, and it was a hugely hot day. So that was great, and we got a lot done. The node volunteers, Marishi University provided about 30 volunteers, so over half of who we got. And I think there's been a big improvement in how the downtown nodes have looked this summer. That's a big challenge because the city doesn't maintain those at all. So we're trying to keep the, the look through our volunteers. And then as far as beautifying the entrances, we have, this year, we, we paid to do plantings at the south entrance and also the east entrance with our, our funds. And then as far as inspiring businesses, we have the Rose Award, which we give throughout the year, starting with Historical Preservation Rose Award for historically preserved properties. So there were four of those, and we partner with the Historical Preservation Commission. And then throughout the summer, we, we give the Rose Award to businesses and homeowners to recognize their efforts. So your handout has, this is in the middle of our fiscal year. So from January to June of last year, these are the projects that we were involved in that we did. And we spent just about what our budget allowed us to do. And then from July to December of last year, this is the list of the different projects that we were involved in. We did get some grant money that we're going to use. We've bought a lot of larger baskets, so you should see a little bit more pop in the baskets this coming summer. And then the pictures, one, on the one top left is for Noi's Law Office. They did a really great job of improving their property. The middle top is some of the volunteers from the Street Sweepers Ball. The right top is one of the MUN volunteers. And the bottom left is two of our volunteers replacing some of the baskets in the alley. The bottom middle is the new Fairfield South sign. We had a nice Christmas decoration put in this year. And then the bottom right is the Historical Preservation Award that went to the Mazdam Barn Visitor Center. And then on the second page, our, this is where we are now in the middle of our fiscal year, as far as what we spent and then what our projections are. Couple of things I'm looking forward to this coming year are the new baskets and making the nodes even better with more volunteers and volunteers who really follow through with what they're going to do. And then we also have a new volunteer who's a retired landscape designer who's very eager to do things with us. He's not a commission member, but his name is Jim Shaw. And the bottom two pictures are his proposal for Heritage Court. He has a design that he is going to, that we will hopefully approve. And he'll volunteer to do all the maintenance. Heritage Court is pretty much neglected right now. The city doesn't maintain it, and our volunteers, we really don't have enough. But he's eager to get involved. So he will do all the planting, redesign the area, and then maintain it. So those are some things we've been doing and what we're looking forward to in the coming year. Questions?
Thank you very much, Paula. You know, the, the additional volunteers for the nodes in the downtown was very noticeable.
Oh, good.
It was really, quite good to see.
I think it helped. We had a sign on each one that said who was, who was in charge of it.
Councilman Hallie has a couple himself, which is...
Yeah, he's been doing it for several years. So we really appreciate that.
Paula, do you, do you see lighting the, the new sign that's on the Pleasant Plain Road? Is there any way of lighting that sign?
That is something...
I mean, it's so sad because I think you come on it so quickly. And I wondered, you know, I mean, landscaping is one thing, but I just wondered if there was any type of solar light or anything that might happen?
I think that's, and the Wayfinding Committee is going to take that on and probably get a grant for that. And then we'll do the landscaping once that's all in place. And, yeah.
Good.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Well, thank you for your report.
Sure. Are there extra ones? I'll take, we have our meeting in a minute.
Sure. And for conserving paper.
Paula, do you want to recycle these?
Paul, here's another one.
And next council will move to our resolutions and action items ordinances. First would be approval of the 2019 mileage rate of 58 cents per mile. And this is the IRS mileage rate, the published mileage rate. So we, this is what we would be adopting for reimbursement for city travel. Any move by Flornoy to approve?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Discussion. Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And we have two tax abatements, applications, want, both from Don Halting. And these are both renovation projects. The first is for 700 North 10th Street. And the improvements would total approximately $30,000. So it would entertain a motion to approve the tax abatement application.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. And then the second property is at 605 Southeast Street. Again, a renovation with an estimated value of $60,000. Entertain a motion to approve the tax abatement application.
So moved?
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next council, we're very excited to present to you. I think so.
I'm glad they finally got it done.
That's what I mean.
In, in your packet, you have the agreement with Alliant Energy to improve our downtown lighting. We have, in, in that quote, there are changes of the old dinosaur lights that are, that are close to the square, which would be more of a color that matches the downtown lighting that we have right now. As you get further away from the square, we go back to the general silver light poles. But the reason for the cost, it's a little more expensive than what we anticipated, primarily for insulation along with the decorative lighting. We also upgraded the, the lighting that was in the decorative lights from, well, we were planning on redoing the interior lights, but we're, we're upgrading the, the wattage or the illumination of the lights to improve the lighting downtown.
Yeah, I think it'll be interesting to see how much more light, Martha. But it will be, I think it'll be a really significant difference. And the other thing, too, is it's, these new inserts are programmable in terms of, you know, where the light is, is actually dispersed.
Right.
So it will, it can cover both street and sidewalk.
It could actually go down rather than...
Yeah. But I think it'll be a big improvement. And again, what Aaron's referring to, there are sections that are spurs that are just off of the downtown squares, which, which, you know, and the lights weren't replaced. So it would be East Burl, East Broadway and West Broadway, and also North Court, where there are 18 of the old lights. So there will be, those are the lights that will match the newer lights that we have in the, in the, in the downtown, plus the two new ones by the convention center.
It should make a lot of difference.
And then the others will be more of a traditional light. But obviously, new poles.
Can't we kind of drag those two slightly down? It's sort of like the people that live up above, we aren't going to be getting complaints about it. It's shutting in their windows and that kind of...
Yeah, the, the nice thing about LED lights compared to what we have now, they are more of a focused light compared to. So it will be more focused than what it's been.
I mean, it's great to have the more light, but the people that are on the second stories may not appreciate it.
Sure, understandable.
And then Erin, how are we paying for all of this?
The majority, the plan was is we were going to pay for it through the backfill dollars that we really weren't putting into the, the general fund in, in general. With the costs that it's at, this time, it's going, it'll take us a little longer with backfill dollars. Councilman Hallie and I had a conversation that if that extends too long, we could certainly use a bond, use a part of our street bond money down the road when we do a bonding for it to fin, pay it off rather than continue to pay the monthly bill, which would get extremely, considerably more expensive if we paid 10 years at the monthly pay.
And are we leasing or buying?
Well, they are ours.
Right.
But the 10 years would allow Alliant to maintain them for the 10 years.
Very good.
Is the maintenance renewable at the end of '10?
That I can't answer.
Well, this is a proposal. We'll get a contract that'll probably have that information included in it, won't we?
Yes.
So the contract will come to council?
Well, I think, I think, we kind of think this is it.
This is the agreement to them. But I don't, but I'm sure there'll be something coming back in writing for it.
It says here, "This is a proposal. A contract will follow after we agree to the proposal." It says here, this is a proposal, a contract will follow after we agree to the proposal. It has all the details in it.
Then, then yes, I would assume that...
Expect us to get another document on this issue with all the details that are being asked about now, I think.
Sure. I can't answer that specifically, but that makes sense to me.
Just write a signature on those couple paragraphs. State that.
Yeah, so I'm not, I guess the question I have is if we're approving this, are we placing an order? Or are we...
I think we're agreeing to the proposal.
And awaiting a contract.
This is the main features of the proposal, and then they'll write a contract that includes all this information for our subsequent approval. That's the way I understand it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take this step, and if this is a first of two or a final, we'll have it done. So entertain a motion to approve the contract for downtown lighting.
I move to approve.
Move by Rasmussen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we're good?
Yes.
Just real quick about the funding. There's been talk of the backfill ending pretty soon. It's been talked about by state legislator of them ending that. So I know our total contribution of backfill was about $178,000, $180,000 for a year. So I know we spent some of that on solar projects. So I'm just really trying to understand how that $120,000 a year, up to 1.2 million if we just let this thing ride out, will be funded by money that we don't know we're going to get.
Well, the revenue is going to be, our revenues have been projecting up, and we've been saving money, so I would guess that that'll come out of the revenue that we are expending, that we're bringing in, that we haven't been expending.
Okay. So we'll use as much backfill as we have available, and then it becomes a general fund expense?
Yes.
I think we should look into the possibility of bonding it out because it might be cheaper in the long run to bond it out.
I would agree. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to send this any longer than a couple of years, also.
Yeah, if we're, if we're...
Yeah, right now...
If we're building a house, we're paying for about twice the other...
Yep.
Yeah, the last legislation, and I don't believe that they've taken anything up in the first week, but the last legislation had Fairfield listed as a, with a three-year timeline, and it was also phased, scaled down. So there are actual numbers that are tied to that that we can reference. So we'll see where it goes in the early part of the legislative session this year, and, you know, see if that does get passed, then we will know definitively what dollars we will be getting.
Yeah, but if we can roll it over into a bond, and, you know, obviously that takes a little bit out of what we wanted to spend on streets, but if that's what we decide, this is, this is worth this, then bonding may be the best way to go, long-term.
Well, I think we'll see. I mean, we also may have the revenue to do that on, from some of the unobligated reserve money that's coming in, the 25% coming in from local option sales tax as well, since we've met our goal.
Portion of each, maybe.
So we will, yeah. We'll definitely value that, but I think we do know that we will have three years of revenue on this. Okay. Next, council, move to a seconding proposal for the resurfacing of East Buchanan, South Maple, North and South Park as final. Melanie?
This was the resurfacing project on East Buchanan, South Maple, and then North and South Park Street. It was a three-inch overlay of those streets awarded to Norris Asphalt. The project was completed in October. It took us a little bit of time to finish up the paperwork on this project, but the project turned out well, and we have now agreed to everything. And so the final price, construction price based on the materials actually installed was $147,872.50, which was about $7,000 less than the bid price. We would recommend that you accept the project as final tonight, beginning the two-year warranty period.
Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Move by Anderson to accept the project as final?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, in my report, I just have one board appointment for this evening. Stan Plum to the museum board. Stan has been, has a background in this area and has been working with the Carnegie Museum Board already, and there is an opening on that board, so I would recommend Stan Plum for the position.
So, second.
Moved by Hallie, second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. We don't have any committee reports. City administrative report.
Today, we had ICAP do a valuation of a lot of our electrical or IT infrastructure. Spent a lot of time with her on that. Been working, we've got all of our budget information in. Rebecca's going back through checking numbers, so she and I will, here in the near future, be working on our budget to get that all put together with the department heads. And also, department head evaluations are going on at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron. Okay, that's everything on our agenda. If there isn't any other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Flornoy.[1786.41]